Need some information or whatever.
County Board of Supervisors made 21st meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government's building in two places and posted on the county website in May 16, 2024. In addition, on Thursday, May 16, 2024, at 3:39 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed a copy of notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email. That complies with the open meeting and solid requirements.
Okay, right, we'll move on then.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Orndall.
Here.
Cam Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Hey Luke.
Here.
Fran Dunkenzyn.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonner Prize.
Here.
Fifteen.
Okay, wanna, I need the Pledge of Allegiance thing. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any motion on the agenda? Mr. Chair, I approve the approval of the agenda as presented. See any amendment?
Second.
A second. Any discussion on the amend, on the agenda? All in favor? Ah, both same sign. Need a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion.
Motion is made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion on their, these resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Any public comment? Anybody there for public comment? Nobody? No, slip right on by.
Having everybody come down here up there, we just have public observation per last meeting. It was requested that public comment come to this room. So Katie does have it on up there for observation, but anybody that wanted to speak would have been directed to this room.
We'd like to have them here if we got the facility or facilitate them. Okay. Go on to number eight, the resolutions. Resolution A. Authorizing partnership with Pace Commission. Need a re, uh, motion of that?
Motion to bring it to the floor.
Motion to make, bring the resolution for discussion.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. Go ahead.
Um, this, I can speak real quick on, uh, the resolution went to county board last time was referred back to committee. Uh, the Pace, Paces, the commercial property assessed clean energy, loan program that uses the equity in the, um, facility to upgrade their facilities for, um, energy efficiencies. Uh, it went to general government for discussion. They had a presentation from the Pace, uh, commission. At that point, uh, the general government committee sent it on to the county board not to recommend.
Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution? Go ahead, Doug.
I would just like to say that I agree with the general government and that's what I was gonna talk about, but I make it that short because I agree.
The general government passed this forward without any recommendation, is that correct? And that's what you agreed with?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, what the vote was at the, uh?
There was no vote.
Mr. Chair?
It's general consensus.
It was forwarded with not to recommend, not a neutral recommendation.
It was forwarded with what?
Not to recommend.
To recommend not approving.
By the general government totally on a vote? Where the hell was I?
That's what I was trying to express, but.
Okay, all right. Resolution, uh, 2024, any other discussion on that? Okay.
Um, I have a question. There was a, I understand from talking to Mo previously that there was a local business that was interested in this program. So if we don't approve this, they won't have this available to them for a development tool or?
Correct. They won't have this opportunity, they won't have this opportunity for long. They'll have to get a conventional loan or a different loan system.
I agree with the general government recommendation not to approve.
You'll get your opportunity of voting, like everybody. Go ahead. Anybody else? Go ahead.
A motion to not approve this.
Uh, we haven't, we haven't finished the motion on discussion yet.
There is no motion on the floor.
To discuss.
Right, that already passed, so now you're discussing, so it's ripe for a motion. I would suggest that somebody move to approve rather than to not approve because it would still then, if, if that fails, then there's a very dark question, just for purposes of Robert's Rules of Order, it's recommended that it's in positive even if you anticipate it not passing.
Or a, a point of order, wouldn't it be appropriate for a motion to end debate?
Absolutely.
And then if that passes, the group has decided to end debate.
Yes.
So I'd make a motion to end debate.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we'll have a motion to approve or disapprove or whatever motion you'd like to make. I don't care what you do. Kim, do you wanna move on it?
Well, I wanna, I do not wanna do it in the affirmative. I wanna do it to not.
Make a motion. You wanna make a motion?
Not to approve it. Even though rules wise, it should be the other way a little bit, but I don't think it has to be.
Could still vote against it.
Not if I make the motion, I should not vote against it. And I'm against it, so I'm.
We have a motion on the floor. Anybody wanna make a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Resolutions are defeated. Resolution 2424.
Motion to bring it to the floor.
Motion made. And? Can you second?
Seconded.
Bring it to the floor. All in favor, do you want for discussion? Is that it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay. Much to address the, uh, motion.
Um, this, I could, I can do it if you'd like. A has been proclaimed Mental Health Awareness Month by the state of Wisconsin and, um, several other municipalities and federal government. This would just be simply acknowledging that. Uh, I drafted this at the request of, um, Tanya Eichel, the Health and Human Services Division Director.
Any more discussion on it? Fran?
This is statement, it was discussed at Health and Human Services and passed along with the recommendation to forward it onto the county board.
More discussion? Need a motion to close discussion. Go move.
Second.
Second to close discussion. Need a motion on the resolution.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry to vote. Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Need a motion to proceed with the resolution.
Okay, make a motion to approve Resolution 2424, proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Resolution 2524. Go to ordinances, chapter two article, have we got a copy of that? On the Rules of Order.
This is just codifying the decision you already made, but one change. Brad Olson recognized our, my error in math. Two thirds of fifteen is ten, not eleven.
Oh, good.
We'll make that change before we have it codified.
All right, need a motion on, uh, on 2524. Ooh, or disprove. I am sure.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve 2524. Any discussion on it?
Way to order this.
Pardon?
We didn't bring it up for debate, did we?
You don't have to.
Point of order, you don't have to bring it up. It, there still can be debate.
As always has been. That's what, this is the way we used to do it.
Yeah.
Moving on. Any other discussion?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just have one comment.
Oh, go ahead.
There's just a typo on page five. I don't know if that needs to be clarified. Instead of ot, it should say two, five G or under. On page five.
Yep.
G, that's all. Thank you.
I was, uh, not a motion, I was just a comment. Okay, any more discussion on it? Need a mo, need a vote on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. It is not on this, on the order. We have a, an, a letter presented to us in reference to, uh, to a, a letter of agreement that Lea passed out. What do you want her to do with that or what are you, tell us?
Um, this is a situation, and I think, um, Mr. Burrows, Chief Deputy Burrows could speak to it or the sheriff, but this is just incorporating, um, bereavement leave for deputies who have not yet met the point of, in time where they would.
The first six months of probation, they're not entitled to hire deputy. They don't, they don't have the opportunity to use benefits like vacation, sick time, bereavement leave. So the side letter was, we have a deputy who just lost his mom and he had been here a few months, so he wasn't able to use bereavement leave. So that's what the side letter is, is just allow us to offer them that benefit. Like we would any county employee.
Sorry, an oversight from the past.
Just bereavement.
Yeah. Isn't that immediate bereavement in the contract?
Or the fringe benefits.
Hell, it should be.
That's what this will do.
That's what they're adding. Yep, okay.
Uh, I'd make a motion, we accept the side letter of agreement.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Okay. Presentations. Confirmation of appointments made by the county board chair. You have a list of them in front of you. It was mailed out, however, we've sent out the wrong copy. Uh, we had a list of the, the old, the old, uh, people that were assigned to the HADHOC and this corrects it by simply adding the names that have been appointed. Now, have everybody had a chance to look at these? Then we'll need. We do motion to approve. As a group, as my appointments, as a group presented to you. I move that we accept the appointments of, uh, confirmation of, by the board chair, number 10, A, B, C, and D.
Oh.
No. No.
I think you should do them one at a time.
You wanna do them one at a time? Yes. We're doing A right now.
One at a time.
No, just the.
I'm sorry, we're doing B, the one that I passed out. Oh, yes, you are. Yeah. The A, A is one that's not listed on here. This is one that I appoint.
This is just B.
No.
So you can approve this as one, but not A, C, and D with it.
Actually, right, this is.
This one.
This.
Oh, is D on?
Is, this one here is B.
And D?
And D.
And D. My motion is to approve the appointment of the county chair. Uh, first, I've got to take A, Executive Committee Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. I am appointing, uh, Russ as the chairman and Steve Orndall as the vice chairman of that committee. Now I'll take your resolution of, I don't need approval of that. So go ahead with confirmation or on B or whatever you wanna do with that. I'm in, uh, by the county chair, I'm the, number, N, B.
And D, because it's the same sheet. It's on the same sheet.
N, B.
And D. D is on the same sheet.
And D, yeah, right, correct. Those two are connected.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any discussion on these?
Second.
And it's seconded, I'm sorry, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on these appointments? If everybody's okay with what we've, uh, are now accepting? More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same time. And I need to point, see, I appoint Terry to the Northwest, the board for that, that committee that came up. So that one, that's, I just, the part, I don't need approval of that. More like this, we're gonna be done before it rains, but. Done before it quit raining, that's what I meant. Might not be the bottom. County administrators got some appointments to, and, yep.
Try to slow things down here. Um, I have a couple of appointments listed on the sheet in green there, uh, to the EDRC board, Darren, Russ, and Fran. And then on the backside, um, but, as the A rep for the.
I missed any of your sheets?
ESC. ESC, green ones.
It's the same sheet as towards A.
It's the same sheet.
Oh, I get it. I see what you're doing. Just on that, you're starting at the top.
And then Terry Howar is on the same sheet for the West Central Regional Planning Commission. So I'd look for a motion to approve those appointments.
Make it most.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then my next appointment is for the HHS Committee, uh, for the citizens on the horse, Logan Maliva, Sabrina Medoff, Rita McPhee, and Dr. Loggins for the Health and Human Services Committee.
And I.
You have a motion on that?
Can we, I, I make a motion to move this into discussion on that?
Well, the motion. Are you ready for, we need a motion on the approval of it.
Or?
She wants to discuss it. Wants to discuss.
I would like to discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what we, but who made the motion to appro, to approve it?
Nobody else.
We can't discuss until it's on the floor.
They just brought it to the floor.
Bring it for discussion.
You're bringing, you're making a motion to discuss that?
Bring it up for discussion, yes.
Okay, that's a long one, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Go ahead and discuss it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate and thank those that have served for years as voting members on that HHS committee, but there's some questions around, um, the Wisconsin state statutes, uh, regarding, um, a local board of health. Um, and I'm just gonna read a little bit about that. It should consist of not more than nine members. At least three of those members shall be persons who are not elected officials or are not employees of the governing body that establishes the local health department. And they have to be people who have demonstrated interest or competence in the field of public health or community health. In, in appointing the members who are not elected officials or employees, a good faith effort should be made to appoint a registered nurse and a physician, except that if the appointing authority is unable to locate a willing registered nurse or physician or both, it should make a good faith effort to appoint a physician assistant, advanced practice registered nurse or both. It also notes in that statute that members of the local board of health should reflect the diversity of the community. And in the past, I believe we've automatically appointed the same folks every two years. I mean, we do this, but we're in the process of doing every two years and it's been the same people since I've been on the board, which is, you know, the way it is. But per the statute, it says govern, governing bodies of counties, cities, and villages that appoint local boards of health shall specify the length of terms of members and shall provide for staggered terms. We don't do staggered terms here, and it's saying that we should be providing for staggered terms. And it's just something we haven't followed in the past, but I, what I would like to make, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we table these appointments and extend the terms of the current people for another month to give us a chance to see if there's any other community members that are interested and qualified to serve on this committee. And it will also give us the opportunity to review the length of terms and how we should stagger those terms because we, we're required by statute to do that and we don't do it today. And all it would do is move it out a month.
So rather than table, then it really is a motion to postpone.
Post.
You feel that a motion on discussion first.
Yeah.
Sorry to hold it on.
Mr. Chair, may I speak to that? I, I think, Sharon, I've been on that committee for, well, this will be my 11th, 12th year. And what has happened here, we didn't have people available.
Yeah.
And so, uh, uh, when we could get some people available, uh, we extended them as, you know, permanent to, to approval by our county chair.
Yep.
So we were very lucky, you know, to have Dr. Loggins year after year after year. And also Rita McKee, she was a doctor and nurse down at Rochester. And.
And it's nothing against, I, I, I agree. These are, these are great people. They've done a great job, but, but I think we need to follow the statute as far as determining officially what their terms are. And then, because right now, we just automatically do it every two years, but, and then we should stagger those terms so that we're not doing all four of them at the same time. And do we wanna stay with four? Because we don't have to have four. We can have three if we choose. We can have a maximum of nine people on that committee. And three of them need to be members of the community.
I, I think the feeling and discussion was over the years that there were some things, sure, there's a statute, but there were some things that were, you know, county could have their own policy and have a policy fit. And in this case, it does. So, uh, I think our policy is really sufficient and. The motion is to table it for a month so that Lea can review it.
Postpone to date certain, but, but I, I, I was contacted and she's right about the staggered terms. That is a requirement in the statute and we haven't done that. So the options would be to take some of them and only appoint them for a year so that it ends next year and then you could reappoint, um, or two years instead of two. Um, but I think the, the motion is, is not so much to have me review because I think that's the real only legal question. The other question is whether the language that requires the citizen members to represent the diversity of the community, if you're always appointing the exact same people, are you satisfying that element? I mean, that's, that's, you know, not something that I think any attorney is going to say, yes, this absolutely violates or no, it doesn't. It's really, do you wanna lay it on the table, excuse me, postpone to date certain, so you can have a month to see if there's, I don't know, a doctor or nurse that says, yes, I would like to become a part of that.
Because we haven't been proactive in saying, are you interested in this? Go through the process of applying, if you are, and, and we haven't done that. And we do that with the board every two years and just thinking that in order, if we're gonna do this, figure out how to do the staggering so we, so we're following the statute, then.
I see.
Fran, do you have something?
So.
Wait a minute, I can't hear you with the. That happens every meeting, so don't worry. I know how to turn the damn thing off, is the trouble.
So if, if, you know, the board agrees, we should be staggering the terms, then that's something that needs to be addressed. Um, as far as a process of seeing if there's other community members who may be interested, who may be appropriate, um, I don't know, since the board hasn't done this before or hasn't done in a long time, what an appropriate process would be.
We've got a process defined already at the county level. There's an application, there's a definition of the job description of a volunteer on a committee. Um, there's a whole thing talking about citizen appointments to pull county committees, so that's in place already.
So are they volunteers?
Yes.
Legally? Do they meet the definition of a volunteer? Their statutory position, that's defined by statute that we have these citizens. So I don't, I don't know that, I'm not an attorney. I don't know that that would meet any type of legal definition as being a volunteer. They do get paid a per diem, don't they?
They do.
They do. And I don't know if, you know, the other committees have volunteers who do that or not.
I mean, just, just to be frank, one of the citizen members appears remotely at every meeting, never unmutes, never communicates, and has been getting a per diem every, every, every month and.
Except for this past month, she was there, right?
Right, that's been the, the first time in.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Clarify this. The motion is made to postpone it and date certain, which would be next month at our meeting, to, for you to give us a, some semblance of what this committee is gonna consist of and how we should approve it.
Sure, I could make a recommendation as to how you can stagger terms, but ultimately it's up to the administrator to appoint and then you to confirm or, or not confirm. So if, if the motion is to postpone to a date certain and then the administrator can maybe meet with Sharon Kelly and my office and we can come up with a, with a plan as to whether he wants to come back next month and simply, uh, name the same four people or, or maybe look at something different if there's more interest. But I think that motion that was made never got seconded by anyone.
No, I was waiting for it.
So. Okay.
So do those people who have been on it, do they need to like apply if they wanna get appointed?
That's what's gonna be cleared up.
Yeah, that would, that would again be up to the administrator, okay?
The administrator can also, per statute, can determine which of, if, which of those , um, citizen members can vote or, or can vote.
Correct.
Right now, it, it, it just, it's just assumed all four can vote on anything, but the administrator actually has the say on whether somebody should be a voting member or not.
Correct.
Just like on the Environmental Services Committee, there's one, one community person, representing the farming area and, and it was decided a few years ago, that person was a voting member. And that's the only committee that I'm aware of that has another.
Any more discussion on it?
How would we set, there could be term limits so that you could do a four-year, five-year, whatever. I mean, elected officials are four.
Yeah.
So there could be a four, two, and a three. So that would be up to.
To start staggering them, so in the future, there's just gonna be one.
Or something every three years.
We do that at the town board level too. We stagger the terms so that everybody wasn't up for election every year.
Every other year, you're replacing two.
Okay.
You know, so you stagger the two or stagger the three.
Yeah.
And, and we could certainly do an outreach to try to see if there's more interest in it. With, um, each hospital and start with that and we get any. we get any, we get, we get something to review, and if not.
Yeah.
Come back.
Rand, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I think it's just regardless of how this comes out a month from now, I think it's very important that we get on staggered terms, and so taking a month to get on staggered terms and being within state statute, I think is extremely important.
Well, that's clarifying what we're voting on. That's a good idea. All right, any more discussion? You to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same time, B.
You already did, didn't you?
Yes.
You already done. That B is done.
Yeah.
It was on the second page. He read that off on his first one.
Terry was already on it previously.
So it's just the reappointment.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I thought Terry Howard on the previous page was to the Wisconsin.
Two, Northwest.
Oh, sorry.
This appointment has got to be confirmed, is that correct?
And then C is moot.
Which one?
Me.
B was confirmed on your first one.
That was my.
Everything on the green on the sheet. Terry listed in green.
We did not include B.
Not included in there? If not, then yes, we need to confirm that one also.
That's my understanding.
I make a motion to confirm. Second.
Just a minute, please. We did not confirm. And Secretary, wasn't B and D under my motion?
Green.
On the green.
Under administrator.
Your, your motion was on my appointment, not under. Well, this has not been approved.
So what I have. All the greens. Is all the green, that we did not do the Terry Howard to travel Northwest, which is not on Michigan.
We did that, but. It's on, on the next flip over.
On this one. You did.
Then all of them are done.
They're all done, right, that's the same one.
Terry was on there.
It's the same one.
And the A D R C.
Draw my second, and draw my first.
And then C is moot.
All right. Did, did we have a motion on that?
No. It's.
Need a motion to, uh, C.
C is mute. C comes, C comes off the agenda as the resolution was not.
That was at pace. We denied that.
Yes.
Correct.
We don't need it, we move on to chairman's report. One thing we had around was to set up these appointments for ad hogs that we've been working on, that's not, that you're not aware of, anything like that. So that would be the extent of the appointments. All complete, as we hoped it would be. So we go on to administrator.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, a few items. Sales tax was up in April again, uh, but point one percent, so a thousand dollars for the positive. No point in the right direction there. Uh, Polk County Highway, we were, um, we got two, uh, surface transportation projects, uh, grants awarded to us, one for county E from Lewis to I and County Road T from U S Highway Eight, uh, to the lake there. And that's, uh, four point four million dollars in both projects we got grants for. Um, we also were awarded two bridge projects, uh, one fifty-third in Apple River. That should be a hundred percent covered by the state. And then County Road I, the Clam Falls Bridge, which means we'll be placing that bridge in twenty twenty-seven. So that's good news there. Uh, the seats of roof project is complete. The ATV intensive park, uh, was awarded to stout construction. So the intensive park will start, um, work on that and hopefully be completed by November is our goal. Uh, Treatment Court has one graduation coming up in June. Um, it's going to be either the seventh or the fourteenth. I would encourage you all to go to Treatment Court to see that, um, it's very well worth it. Uh, the Clam Falls Day on project has started. They started removing stuff from the Clam Falls, uh, powerhouse, the turbines and stuff, getting that done. Uh, so that project is up and running. Stower, the stower, the judge ruled on the stower. It's four hundred and sixty-seven pages long. Basically, his ruling was no equestrians or snowmobile on the stower. Um, this will.
Was ruling, I'm sorry.
The ruling was no snowmobiles or horses on the stower. Um, we do have the appeals, uh, process still going through right now, but this will be a topic on future committees and closed sessions for our options on that, so. Just to let you know, that'll be coming up on the next committees and probably on the next board meeting for a closed session on those.
Just, may I?
You may.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the decision we have was from Judge Black on the county's motion to reconsider his previous decision that resulted in the same decision, no horses, no snowmobiles, because he based that decision on the wrong record. So now this decision is based on the actual record. The county already filed its briefs in the Court of Appeals because the Court of Appeals reviews the county board decision, not Judge Black's decision. There's no need to redo our appellate work, that's already in the works. So before October first, or is it October first, the beginning of equestrian season? So before October first, we could certainly have a decision from the Court of Appeals that is the same or very different from what we have from Judge Black. We also might not. Same thing before snowmobile, I would anticipate we'll have some decision from the Court of Appeals before snowmobile season. But there is obviously some potential that they will not. I do think the Court of Appeals is going to be a faster process than what we've gone through at the circuit court level. So I, 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 you know, we will put this on future closed sessions so we can get into the meat of it. If anybody wants the opportunity to read the four hundred and sixty-seven page document that I was going to bring as a prop, I've been bringing it to every meeting that I go to just as my, my, you know, sidekick, and I, I didn't bring it today, so you don't get to, to view it, but it, it really is this thick. I can certainly email it to anyone who's interested.
Right now, if somebody wants to ride a horse on the trail, they cannot.
Not, normally, they wouldn't be able to right now anyway, they'd have to wait until October, but as of right now, that's correct. But it could change any day.
Has Judge Black, Black announced his retirement date?
My understanding is he has indicated that he is not going to be running for another term.
I heard. So that would be probably next April?
No, I think it's twenty twenty-six, but I'd have to look to be sure.
Six years. Okay, does, does he have anything else?
The only other thing I have is the annual meeting and the conference for the W C Aids and lacrosse this year, September twenty-second and twenty-fourth. Our clerk needs to know by June first if you're attending. The hotel rooms book out fast, probably within days. So if you're planning on attending that, uh, please let Shabana know, and she can get you registered down there for that. Registration opens up on the third, but she needs to know the, um, June first, so she's ready to hit that trigger and get those prime rooms. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for, or anybody have any comments on as a supervisor's announcement, announcements they'd like to make? Mr.?
I've got one. So with this being passed, is this going to be our official rules of order? Each of us have the copy now, so that we don't have to make another one to hand out.
What are you looking at?
Our rules of order that we all supposed to carry with us. This is the one.
I can get you an updated one that says ten instead of eleven.
Did you?
But if you can handle remembering that it's ten instead of eleven, you could.
This, this would be the one, the same about thirty pages in.
And then will there be a new one on the municipal website to this? There also will update the municipal website off of the county board, or excuse me, the county websites, so that we'll have the. I'll be sending this to municipal tomorrow, so we'll probably have it up relative.
So save those pages, you don't get them.
Does anybody have, but, does anybody else have any comments?
Public Safety and Highway Committee is, uh, is a standard agenda slot now for the fair society. They attended our last meeting. Uh, the purpose is so they can communicate some of the things they've done to us, and we can pass it on to the board. Some of the events they've had is at Eastlake Hunt in cooperation with the sheriff at the grounds. Uh, they had a Feed My Starving Children where six hundred volunteers made enough meals for three hundred third-world kids to be fed for a year. So. And May first had Career Day, they had twenty or twenty-five local businesses there. And then they trucked in students, they figured there was eight hundred students there going through, and they give them an opportunity to run various equipment. Some of them got to run bucket trucks from Polk Burnett and, you know, go through and talk to people about careers. Uh, they have the prisoners from New Richmond come down and do cleanup, so this spring they had them down and had them clean up. And, uh, see, this week they got a graduation in the building there. No progress on the grandstand, we are waiting for them to clarify the positioning of the new grandstand so that Cedar Corp can continue on with the plan until that's done. Can't continue on. And the show barn roof, I think they started on it, but the, the weather's got them out of there. They wanted to replace that roof, and Mo and I worked together last year to come up with a different process where they're going to seal that roof instead of replace it. And they done it to our fire hall and cushioning, and it turned out really great, and about half the price of replacing their roof, so. That's the update I have for that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. We're at fifteen.
Make a motion when you adjourn.
I got a motion made in seventy-two, do you have any discussion? I have a moment, I just, this is, all in favor.
Yeah.